I couldn't hear anybody, my speaker was off. That'll do it. That'll do it.
Hey, it's 2020. What else? All right, my kids. All right, so let's go ahead. We're going to call this meeting to order. And, um, this is Tuesday, November 17th. How's that? Are we seeing clearly now, or is everything still kind of foggy for me? Let's see, um. Loretta, I see you are in our Zoom room. Could I have asked you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, I would be honored, Commissioner. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation after God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Loretta. And with the clerk of the board, call roll, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
Having issues hearing very well.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie. Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following. A change of limited liability members for the DAB-LAB. A liquor license application for the welfare market. Change of location application for Rocky Brook Ranch and New Sussex Farm LLC. A change of corporate officers for the juicer extractions. And a marijuana license will be discontinued for the Wicked Green Gardens. We received applications from April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons for the Housing Authority Board. Pete Beckus sent in a letter of resignation from the Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Panel. And Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in a letter regarding Cushman Number One, Stress and Stability Analysis Updated Plan and Schedule for the Cushman Project.
Great, thank you. Forgot to turn down my phones. That would be embarrassing. All right, moving on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for public input. I do not see anyone on, in our Zoom room from, or members of the public in our, in our Zoom room. Do we have any, um, anything from the public? Has anyone mailed, emailed anything to, into you or letters? Great, thank you. Moving on to item number six, Adoption of Today's Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of today's agenda as presented.
All second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of today's agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Moving on to item number seven, Approval of Minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the September 14th, 2020 and November 2nd, 2020 briefing minutes, as well as the November 3rd, 2020 regular meeting minutes as presented.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the September 14th, 2020 and November 2nd, 2020 briefing minutes and November 3rd, 2020 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to item number eight. Approval of today's action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on the action agenda. Commissioners or members of the political can ask questions or have items removed for a separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Schutie, if you could take items 8.1 through 8.6. Commissioner Netherland, items 8.7 through 8.11. And I will read items 8.12 through 8.16.
Okay, item A point one, Approval to Set a Public Hearing for December 8th, 2020 at 9:15 a.m. to Consider Approval of Budget Supplemental Appropriations and Amendments to the 2020 General Budget. Total requests for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund are $4,292,055. Total request, the authorized expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund are $14,337,538. Item five, item 8.2. Approval of Warrants and Treasury Electronic Remittances Claims Clearing Fund warrant numbers 807-5514 through 807-5630 and the amount of $1,549,931.97. Direct Deposit Fund warrant numbers 72679 through 73071 and the amount of $719,807.73. Salary Clearing Fund warrant numbers 7005531 through 7005566 and the amount of $993,788.49. Treasury Electronic Remittances in the amount of $622,050.52. Item A point three, Approval for the Chair to Sign the Non-Competing Continuation Attestation Letter for the Sampson Grant Numbered 19T181939A for Mason County Recovery Court Expansion. Item A point four, Approval to Sign the Interagency Agreement Numbered IAA21575 for the Interpreter Reimbursement Program through the Administrative Office of the Courts. Item A point five. Approval of two resolutions, making a declaration of substantial need for purposes of setting the limit factor. One for the current expense and one for the county road property tax levy for the year 2021. And item A point six, Approval for the Mason County Board of Equalization to Hear Completed and Timely Filed Appeals for the 2020 Assessment Year.
Madam Chair, item number 8.7 reads, Approval for the Board to Authorize the Public Works Director to Execute the Service Level Agreement with Washington Technology Services, Washington Tech, for GIS imagery services. Item number 8.8 reads, Approval for the Board to Authorize the Chair to Sign the following Title VI of the Civil Rights Act related requirements. Number one, updated Title VI non-discrimination agreement. Number two, annual report covering the reporting period from May 1st, 2019 to April 30th, 2020. And number three, U.S. DOT standard Title VI non-discrimination assurances. Item number 8.9, Approval of the 2020 through 2021 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the SED's project list as recommended by the Mason County Economic Development Council. Item number 8.10, Approval to Amend Contract 20-084 with Additional CARES Act Funding for Crossroads Housing for the Eviction Rent Assistance Program Grant. Item number 8.11, Approval to amend Contract 20-069 to accept the additional $852,048 from the Department of Commerce for the Emergency Solutions Grant COVID-19. Approval to amend subcontracts with Crossroads Housing and Shelton Family Center to expand non-congregate shelter capacity, increase support staff and rental assistance to move households into permanent housing from the temporary emergency shelters. Approval to enter into contract with Turning Point to increase shelter operations and case management in response to the COVID-19.
Item 8.12, Approval to set a public hearing for December 8th, 2020 at 9:15 a.m. to consider approval of the Chehalis Basin Partnership Addendum in response to the 2018 Stream Flow Restoration Act. Item 8.13, Approval of the Adjusted Environmental Health Free Schedule with an Effective Date of January 1st, 2021. Item 8.14, Approval for a payment of 5,000 to the City of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the State of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor. to the State of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor 208 SR16 to SR3 Gorst Interchange Transportation Project. Item 8.15, approval to sign the sub-recipient contract with the EDC to assist with CARES funding, or CARES Act funding to the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound North Mason Team and the South Sound YMCA for COVID-19-related costs and mitigation efforts. Item 8.16, approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr. as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November 17th, 2025. Having read through the action agenda, are there any items that you would like to be removed for additional discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove item 8.14 and item 8.15.
And item 8.16, please.
Okay, and I do believe we need to remove item 8.1 as well.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda with the exception of removal of 8.1, 8.1. Uh, what do we have here? Up 1 for, 8.15 and 8.16.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda. But remove items 8.1, 8.14, 8.15, any 8.16. Is there any additional discussion on those?
No, just a compliment. Item number 8.12, we're setting this public hearing on an issue that is very important to this county and our people and all the work that's gone into this stream flow. Dave, an extra pat on the back for all that hard work and everything that you and your folks have put into all that. This is a big event and this will help set the stage for the other ones that we've all been working on. Thank you.
Agreed. So we have a motion and a second. Already said that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The action agenda is approved. So let's move on to item 8.1 and ask staff to brief.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Jennifer Byerly. So the change that we had on item 8.1 from when it was briefed was adding $20,000 to the Auditor's Office for APSME contract settlement to budgeted salaries. So the total request for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund went from $4,272,055 to $4,292,055 with this change. The total request to authorized expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund remain at $14,337,538. Are there any questions on this change?
Not for me.
No.
No, not for me. I appreciate you catching that and amending it. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
What's that? Madam Chair, I move for the approval to set a public hearing for December 8th, 2020 at 9:15 a.m. to consider approval of a budget supplemental appropriations and amendments to the 2020 budget. The total request for, but, for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund are $4,292,055. Total request to authorize expenditure appropriation in funds other than general fund are $14,337,538.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second for approval to set a public hearing for December 8th, 2020 at 9:15 a.m. to consider approval of budget supplemental appropriations and amendments to the 2020 budget. Total request for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund are $4,292,055. Total request to authorize expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund are $14,337,538. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item 8.14. This is the approval for a payment of $5,000 to the City of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the State of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor 208 SR16 to SR3 Gorst Interchange Transportation Project and ask staff to brief.
Thank you, Commissioners. Previously, the board had been briefed on the request for assistance in the marketing and lobbying costs for the Gorst project. This is putting it on the, on the agenda for approval.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? We have questions from the public for staff. Okay, being no hands raised. Do we have a motion or?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 8.14 for a payment of $5,000 to the City of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the State of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor 208 SR16 to SR3 Gorst Interchange Transportation Project, and then I will have a comment.
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to thank Commissioner Netherland for his efforts on, on this issue. I know for many people that live in Mason County and in Kitsap County as well, this bottleneck in Gorst has been a nightmare for commuters, but it's also an opportunity for us to not only make improvements to the transportation infrastructure there, but also open up, you know, a modern interchange for economic development. And so just a word of thanks to Commissioner Netherland for his efforts on this. Look forward to the $5,000 contribution paying dividends for Mason County into the future. And I look forward to future updates from Commissioner Netherland on it.
With that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment also. Special thanks to all of the commission then because it is all, it is very appreciative that we have a commission in Mason County that understands we're not locked just in this county, that what happens around us has a huge impact on us. And not all counties can say that, so thank you to Commissioner Schutie and Commissioner Trask as well because this will affect everybody. Thanks for your forward thinking on this.
All right, I look forward to, to the adventures happening up north, I guess you could say. I think that we have a lot of opportunity up north and, and we're taking advantage of that. And I too want to thank Commissioner Netherland for bringing this forward. All right, all those in favor of item, of the, the approval for a payment of $5,000 to the City of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the State of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor 208 SR16 to SR3 Gorst Interchange Transportation Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. Moving on to item 8.15. Ask staff to come forward and present.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, this was a, an attempt by the board to assist the Boys and Girls Club of South Sound, the North Mason Team and the South Sound YMCA in costs related to COVID-19 in their daycare services. The South Sound YMCA was determined to be ineligible for some of these costs. So they have declined to enter into the contract as was proposed. In addition, because the EDC is, is also not in a position to enter into these contracts, the contract has been, can be modified if the board so determines to, one, have the county be the sub, the agent that enters into the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound as well as taking the $20,000 that was available to the YMCA and assigning it to the Boys and Girls Club if the board so determines.
Great. Do we have questions for staff? Seeing none.
So I would, I would recommend then if, to modify the item 8.145 to read approval to sign the sub-recipient contract to assist with CARES Act funding to the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound North Mason Team for COVID-19-related costs and mitigation efforts for $40,000.
Madam Chair, I'll move for the approval to sign the sub-recipient contract for CARES Act funding to the Boys and Girls Club, the South Puget Sound North Mason Team for COVID-19-related costs and mitigation efforts up to $40,000.
I'll second that.
Do we have further discussion, comments?
Madam Chair, first off, thank you to both yourself and Commissioner Netherland for supporting this. One of the, one of the major issues that, that we've come across during the several months of our COVID response is how many elements of our community are impacted, whether they be through, you know, school closures or remote learning or families having their hours reduced or job, job loss and, and just those economic impacts on top of all the very real and serious health concerns that, that the pandemic has presented. And so I appreciate being able to support with our CARES Act funding this organization in North Mason. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get money in this round to the Y and that's just sort of a structural issue that, that, you know, kind of occurs when you're trying to, you know, allocate these funds and work with, with different community partners. And, and so hopefully, hopefully, hopefully we'll have another opportunity to support organizations like the South Sound Y if there are future rounds of, of funding provided by both the state and federal government. And I really hope that there are at this point as we continue to see the virus persist. But excited to be able to get this help to North Mason to support those kids and families up there who are struggling through this and, and appreciate your support on this contract as well.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, you know, it's always, the things that really make the biggest difference are the individual, uh, personal attention that we as Commissioners give. Commissioner Schutie, I'm completely aware and appreciative of all your personal interactions to get us to this point with this organization. Thank you on behalf of all of them and as well as my community up there. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, truly appreciate you bringing this forward. I know you worked hard and you have a very strong passion for this and truly appreciate this. I know the families up, up north are, are very grateful for the, the Boys and Girls Club and for the help that they, they give everyone. So again, thank you, Commissioner Schutie, for bringing this forward and, and helping push it along.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just, a word of thanks to our staff here at the county. Frank and, and Jennifer and others who, who worked on this for the past several months. As well as thanks to Katie Musgrove up at the Boys and Girls Club in North Mason. It's, um, appreciate having those partnerships in the community.
Great, great. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion is approved. Let's move on to item number 8.16, the approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr. as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November 17th, 2025. Ask staff to come forward and brief.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I just jump in on this one?
Absolutely.
Okay, the only thing, uh, reason why I asked it to be pulled, there's nothing wrong with our appointments on this in any way, sense or form. I just wanted to give us an opportunity to have another discussion real quick. There's another application that had come in. I think we know the person and I didn't think we would need the interview, but it'd be up to the commission. This would give them their full board if we were to appoint the, the third application that came in, which was George Blush. And so I would like to include the third application and finish this off if the other commissions would be, don't have any objection to that.
I would be amenable to that change.
I think it's a great addition and it will be great to have a full board.
Yes. Well, with that, Madam Chair, I move for approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr. as well as George Blush as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November 17th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr. George Blush as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November 17th, 2025. Did we have someone in the Zoom room that wanted to say anything? No. All right, do we have further discussion?
Just a huge thank you to April, Alan and George for stepping up. This is going to be a complicated situation that they're going to be walking into. They have our full support as they, as they get into this work. But also a huge thank you to both Kathy and Gary for sticking it out on the Housing Authority Board for as long as they have. We wouldn't be having these conversations if it wasn't for Kathy Hage's stick-to-itiveness and perseverance in, in keeping these issues in the forefront. So excited to see what happens with a full board.
As, as am I. I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a huge step forward. And I look forward to having all of them on the board and having a fully functioning board. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. All right, moving on to item number nine. Other business, do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to say anything?
Commissioners, if I may, for a quickie.
Absolutely.
To give thanks, with Pete Buckus's resignation from Tip Cap, it reminds me and our team of how thankful we are for our citizen volunteers and Tip Cap and our SWAC. And I know certainly there are other advisory bodies and folks dedicating many, many hours of time to community service and public service and just wanted to say how appreciative we are. We get a lot more done through our great volunteers and thank you, thank you.
Well said, and, and I know I agree wholeheartedly.
Yeah, Pete is a real, a real class act. And he brings a career of just really great expertise in, in transportation and, and local government. And so he will be truly missed, but he has more than earned the opportunity to step down when he's ready and, and I wish him all the best in his next, his next endeavor.
Absolutely. We as well and.
Absolutely quality person. Couldn't have done any better. A hard, hard person to replace.
Agreed. I think I'll still pick up the phone every now and then and bug him though.
Well, good, unless he disconnects his number. Call away.
Right.
All right. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission?
Just maybe we could have Dave just, I'm not sure. I know we have Board of Health later on this afternoon, but for folks who might be tuning into this, but not that, maybe Dave could give us an update on, on where things stand. And it was an active weekend from the governor's office and just give us an idea of where things stand looking ahead.
Okay, hey, thanks. So yes, it was an active weekend from the governor's office. So on Friday, a travel advisory came out to ask people if they travel out of state and come back to Washington or as they travel coming to Washington voluntarily quarantined for 14 days. That was the first piece and it was after the governor's talk on Thursday night. That was the first piece. And it was after the governor's talk on Thursday night. And then on Sunday, the governor came out with 16 new. I'm not going to say restrictions because they're kind of reverse in phase. But they are restrictions. So, and those we have posted online, they've probably seen them a lot of places. Probably the biggest things that affect Mason County are the reductions to indoor dining. So after, I think it's midnight tonight, indoor dining goes to zero. Outdoor dining is limited to five people. And we've already had a couple of our local, our food establishment is saying, hey, we are putting up tents and we're going outside. So more power to them. We have a number of retailers that, well, all of our retailers, retailers will be restricted to 25% of occupancy. So some of them are already starting with some curbside and some other innovative ways of maintaining services to their customers. And so that's out there as well. If people want more information, they can go either to our website, the county website, or they can go to, you know, Facebook. If you look at our county website or Facebook page or the Macecom or any of those Mason government Facebook pages, that's all up there. It's, it's slated to go as far as December 14th. That's all we've heard for sure so far. We are waiting for the actual, so we've gotten the, the two-page document. We're actually waiting for the governor's office to come out with the specifics for all of those things. And I expect that anytime probably this week to, to get those specifics out. And as soon as we get those out, we'll be putting that out through the Joint Information Center through Area Command to get that through as many channels as possible. So that's kind of the highlights. It's really around the food and, and oh, the other thing is indoor gatherings. No indoor gatherings, outdoor gatherings of five people. So for Thanksgiving time, governors asking people to not have people outside of your, your family household with your fam- in your Thanksgiving or actually any indoor gathering between now and December 14th. So that's probably the other big thing. So, and I have any questions?
How about from a cases perspective? Dave, what are, what are the trends that you're seeing locally and how does that fit in regionally?
Okay, so last week we had a lot of, of our cases were in the 20 and younger category. So that might've been some thought from maybe Halloween. This week, over the weekend, we had an average of four cases per day, which is kind of a plateau for us. We kind of bounce up and down around that four cases per day. We did have one day last week when we shot up to, I think it was 20 cases. Where we're seeing our cases is not from coming from retail establishments, but it's really from household contacts. And typically it's, it's one member of the household through travel or whatever is, comes in contact with COVID, brings it home, and then the family gets it. So it's kind of waterfalls or cascades through the family. And that's what we're seeing right now. And as I think as we see this fall and people are now coming indoors more, I mean, the rain is here, folks, and, and folks are together inside. We'll see more of that, I think.
Thank you.
And I think best place to get information, I mean, you can always give the health department a call, but go online, all the guidance is online. And encourage everyone to follow it. It's, it's kind of, yesterday we met with Dave and I met with the, the chambers and with the EDC to see if we could come up with new and innovative solutions or opportunities, I guess, for our businesses to to hopefully keep their doors, doors open and not go under. I know I've, I've heard from a lot of businesses that they're they're on the teeter totter and the totter that, is it the teeter or the totter? Anyway, one side's going down and, and it's, it's going to be tough on them. They're not sure that they can make it an additional 30 days. So if we can support them by going in 25%, can go into a, a store. I mean, that's what their capacity is. So I encourage everyone to, to please shop local.
Right. And one of the things, there's two things that I'm thinking of. One is it, this is just an interesting note is that it seems like that the symptoms that COVID is presenting with are different than that they were last summer or last spring. It seems like typically the, the most noticeable thing now is loss taste and smell as the precursor to going and getting tested. Or in the spring it was the cough and, and fever. So it's presenting in a different way. The other thing I talked with staff and I want to bring it up today at the Board of Health is to think about postponing, typically what we do is we send out our billings for restaurant licensing in December with that revenue coming in in January. And I went to talk to the Board of Health this afternoon about thinking about what if we do notices in January, once we come off of this hiatus for maybe a February revenue pull. So just to give our restaurants a little bit of a breathing room before they're looking, you know, to pay their, their annual food bill. You know, let things get restocked and restarted before we, we come in as, you know, with their, their permits. So something we can talk about this afternoon at Board of Health.
Right, right. Also, I also wanted to mention that you can also get ahold of the, the chambers or the EDC. They can absolutely help you through through this, the, the new restrictions here too. They're, they're all very hopeful, very knowledgeable.
And we, the governor said he is putting out $50 million in additional funding, but we've not seen what that looks like yet. And I think that's going to be allocated very quickly. I'm not sure if that's on the November 30th deadline or if that's on the December 30th deadline.
And we've also started conversations about increasing our support to the EDC, you know, for businesses as well. I'm trying to repurpose and reallocate some of the CARES Act funding out the door as quickly as we can to get it out to those, those folks that are impacted.
Right, right.
Commissioner, I agree with, with those new effect, the thing that's taken effect now. That's a very important conversation sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Where we're at right now in this time with financial to be able to do some of this stuff.
Right, the sooner the better. All right. Any other comments?
Just take it seriously. Stay safe.
All right, let's move on to item number 10. We do not have any public hearings scheduled at this time. So let's move on to item number 11, board reports and calendar. Commissioner Netherland, if you could go first, Commissioner Shude, and then I will follow.
Be honored. Commissioners, we have our area command meetings that we attend a couple of times a week. We have briefing budget, Belfair EIS meeting with staff, spaghetti feed for a gentleman who was in an accident in North Mason. Tim and Frank in regards to the housing authority meeting with some attorneys, Wire 15 meeting, Mason Transit Authority Policy Meeting, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, 35th District's Legislative Meeting. Thank you, Dan Griffey for attending that and listening to all of our issues that we had. Coming up, we have a finance committee meeting, Board of Health meeting, Mason Transit Authority meeting, SAO exit meeting, EDC retreat, North Mason Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, Belfair Community Workshop and Gorth Coalition meeting as well as briefings again on that Monday with North Mason Community Voice hanging on whether they're going to have a meeting or not.
Going forward for me this week, we have our finance committee, SAO Exit Conference, Budget Workshop and Executive Session later this morning. This afternoon I'll be participating with the State Association of Counties and a behavioral health focus group with, with folks from across the state on citing of community-based behavioral health facilities. Really looking forward to that. Board of Health and Mason Transit. Then later on this week, I have the opioid stakeholder group and Hood Canal Coordinating Council, as well as a meeting of the Behavioral Health and Housing Advisory Board. Also be attending the Belfair EIS Workshop on Thursday evening. And then next week, in addition to briefings, before our next meeting, I also have a meeting of the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization.
Great, thank you. So as stated by the my teammates, we do have the finance committee meeting, the Secretary of State's Audit Meeting, Budget Workshop, an executive session, have a call with our folks at Area Agency on Aging. We have Board of Health meeting, Mason Transit meeting. Also during that time, I have a, an LSC meeting. This week is our WASAC virtual conference. So most of this week I will be sitting here. And let's see, then we have our EOC meetings. Several different bits of the WASAC conference, Timber Counties meeting. And then we have the Belfair EIS meeting, have Pac Mountain on Friday. And our, of course, our EOC meetings. Then we have briefing on Monday. And then we also have the canvassing board or had the canvassing board on Monday as well. All right. Do we have anything else, Commissioners?
I do not.
All right, I see no hands up. How about a motion?
Madam Chair, move, we adjourn. Second.
And we are adjourned. You guys in the next room.
...
And if you have any questions, stop me at any time and jump right in. So the next page is our cash and investments at the end of September. A total of 189 million in cash and investments for both the county and the taxing districts. As you can see, most, most of what I have left that hasn't been called are still out there at higher interest rates and that we're currently giving or getting to reinvest. So if we were to sell this portfolio in total, we would have gained 97,000. Of course, our intention is always to hold these to maturity. It's very difficult to find anything to invest in that's not in, you know, the low point two or the low point three basis points. It's, it, it's a horrible market out there. The T bill rate you can see is at point one. I don't know how much, I'll be anxious to see if this year is at zero. I'm praying it doesn't go negative. But our treasuries and agencies are still coming in well above the benchmark at 1.7. The feds are expecting interest rates, you know, to be this low for the next couple of years. There's just nothing out there that indicates that they'll be increasing them in 2021 at the very earliest. And most things that I'm hearing is 2023 possibly. So it's going to remain very flat. For 2020, we had budgeted $800,000 in interest earnings. And as you could see, at the end of September, we were only at 386,000. 2021, we've had this discussion budget wise. You know, we're looking at approximately 400,000, half of what we gained last year in interest earnings for 2021. Banking fees, I am, I still, those fees don't come due until November, so I don't have a good, good figure yet to this point. I spent $1,280 on baking fees. There's tons of, you know, financial statements and investment statements and all kinds of supporting documentation. Are there any questions on those?
None from me.
Great. So we'll just move to old business and I don't, I see Loretta is on, so, but I didn't have a, a specific report for this meeting. But Loretta, if you have an update or any information you want to jump in and provide that to us, that would be great.
Just, and I've got Victor right here with me as well, Lisa. Thank you. We, we, actually, we're just checking in to listen, but happy to give a report if you like. I don't know that there's anything on the immediate horizon. In the past, we were talking about the Skokomish River project and the potential for a short-term bridge loan. Construction is now pushed out for a year, so greatly appreciate your efforts, Lisa, in investigating those financing options. But it looks like we will not be needing that cash flow until probably third quarter of 2021 at this point. So we still need to secure all of our real estate for constructing the project. Once that is complete, then the project will go out to add. And that is targeted. We need to obligate construction no later than September, so.
2021?
Correct. Yeah, so we did not build that into our budget. As we get closer, we'll have two actions. Of course, we need to do a budget amendment to reflect that expenditure and revenue authority. And then, of course, secure the, the cash for that.
And can you remind me just off the top of your head what that funding amount was?
Ew, good question. I want to say right around eight million dollars.
I had seven in my head, but.
Yeah. Yeah, the entire project is right around 22 million and it's a 6535 Fed and local contribution.
All right. Then I don't, yeah, I haven't, on the Belfair wastewater system, moving forward, financing any of that. We just did refinance some of their debt, so. But I'm not sure, construction, if there's any plans for still on any construction or any financing stages for 2021 on that one?
At this point, we are at 30% design for sewer extension. And we expect to see 60% actually here very shortly. The thing that will hold up our construction schedule is that we also need to update the general sewer plan. And that is ready or very close to being ready to submit to Department of Ecology. But that review and approval process may take upwards of a year. That's really what's going to affect our, our construction schedule on that project. And we do, we're planning a work session with commissioners on November 30th to provide an update on some of the details for the Belfair sewer extension, the overall project. So the finance committee members are absolutely welcome to, to sit in on that. And, and if you want to do a little deeper dive on what's happening on that project.
Other financing, so the county did close on the refinancing of multiple county bonds and loans on October 27th. We did use three different banks, Columbia Bank, Casimir Valley Bank. And, oh sure, forgot the other one. It was great working with all of them and it went very smoothly on our end. I can't give enough thanks to Scott and Ryan at Northwest Municipal Advisors and Nancy Naris and Stacy Amasaki at Foster. They, they do the hard work, for sure, and make sure that they keep me on track. So they were great. We had an estimated net savings over the term of the loans of 861,087. We have one bond that is sitting in, so it's the 2008 that we can't refinance until June of 2021. And those funds are all sitting in an escrow account with US Bank until that closing happens in May. But as part of that, there won't be a December payment on December 1st of this year. That's all included in that. And all of the loans that we've refinanced, their first payments are due in June of 2021. So I'm currently working with Jennifer and Leo on getting the 2020 budget amendments included in this last round for the refinancing that we did. Make sure that we have that and all, all the appropriate accounting is done. And Leo is also working on those appropriate accounting entries in the general ledger. So that project is done for right now. That's where we are on that. Are there any questions or anything that you'd like to add? Or Jennifer, Leo, anything that you'd like to bring forward?
I don't have anything, Lisa. Thank you. The bud, except the budget entries are, are online and were part of the resolution that was adopted this morning.
Okay, perfect.
No, I don't have anything.
All right. So yeah, that, that's great. Thank you. Like to know that that part's done as well, because there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the background for sure. And I know Leo, Leo and I have gone back and forth several times on how exactly this should all work. I am still planning a meeting with Public Works, Loretta Utilities, Victor, all of that to discuss. You know, make sure we get you the appropriate debt schedules and everything moving forward. So I still do plan on having that meeting. I apologize if it hasn't happened yet. But with taxes and everything else, it's been a little busy up here.
It's your schedule, Madam Chair, and we'll just anxiously wait. And, and again, thank you for the great work on that, so.
It'll probably at this point be the first part of December, so.
Okay.
But we will get that scheduled, make sure everybody has what they need.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion about our current financing that we just finished up, I'm going to move forward to the draft investment policy. And let me share that screen. Hang on. Let me go share my screen. Come back here, mouse. Well, there you go. Can you see that?
There can.
Okay. All right, so I have sent this out a couple times this year for the finance committee, which would be Sharon and Patty, myself, to review. Although I have included Leo and Jennifer and anybody else who might have any questions. The, the draft policy that we, I used is already approved by the State Treasurer's Office and by the Washington Association of Public Finance Officers. So it, it's, it's not something that I just pulled out of nowhere. The investment policy we, we had before was from them as well and had been certified by them. But they've made some major updates to it. And it was time to get our investment policy updated as well. And we are required to approve this. So I wanted to just check with Sharon and Patty. Did you have any questions? Did you have any thing that you had concerns about? Anything you wanted to add or subtract?
Lisa, I've reviewed this with Leo and I'm, I'm comfortable with where we are. And if you're ready to move forward, would be happy to make a motion at this point.
Okay.
And so I, I will, I will move that we adopt the new investment policy.
I will second that.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Just, just to say, great work on this, Lisa. I mean, it, it really has been a human's effort and very nicely done.
Thank you. I, I won't take all the credit because they do give me, you know, that boilerplate to work from.
Take all the credit.
Right, but sometimes it takes, you know, a while to get in there. And I thought it would just be easy to go in and, you know, kind of cut and paste, but it ended up just being easier to just, yeah, kind of start over from the beginning. So there's a lot of, a lot of line down and a lot of corrections, so that sounds great. So what I would do then, we would, Patty and Sharon will need to sign it once I get it cleaned up. And so I'll make sure that I get that signature page down here for signatures as soon as we get it approved. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right, policy passes. Great. I'll get this cleaned up and a signature page down for you guys to sign. And I can take that off my to-do list.
Perfect. One down, how many more to go?
Yeah, right. Don't look at the background here. My desk is a disaster today. That's all I had for the finance committee meeting today. Is there any other business that someone would like to bring forward before we close out?
I just have a comment. Appreciate all the time that you put into this. And, you know, I, I've asked a few questions and you are readily available to, to answer those questions. And so I appreciate your help and your guidance in this. So thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you. That's what I'm here for. Perfect. Well, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting for today. And thank you, everybody, for joining. And I will talk to you all soon again. See you later.
Commissioner, if it's okay with you, I think we're ready to go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that works for me. Perfect. All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for being today. I'm Chelsea Robinson and I was the audit lead on this year's 2019 financial statement and accountability audit. And then joining me today is Carol Ellinger, who's the audit manager for our Port Orchard team. And then Shale Friesen as well, who is the supervisor on this audit and reviewed the audit. So the purpose of the meeting today is to go over our audit results with county staff. So if at any point anybody has a question or concern or a comment, feel free to stop me so we can go over that. And I can answer any questions as we go through and then I'll periodically stop as well and make sure we're all on the same page and there's no questions. So hopefully you can all see my screen right now. And then I did share this packet with Diane as well. So this is our exit conference document here. And then, so today we're going to be going over two reports. So our accountability audit report for January through December 2019. And then our financial statement and federal grant compliance audit report as well for the same period. So we already issued our financial statement and federal grant compliance report earlier in October. And then we will be issuing our accountability audit report after today. So before we get started, I wanted to really thank all of the county staff that assisted us through the audit. I know it's been a crazy year for everybody. A lot of things, you know, obviously with COVID and then the election. And I know there are a lot of departments that were very busy throughout the accountability audit and financial federal audit. And they were really great to work with. They made us our priority and the audit went really smoothly. So I just wanted to emphasize that and thank everybody. And then thank Leo, of course, for facilitating a lot of the audit as well. So thank you to everybody that helped us with that. And then, so recommendations not included in the audit reports. We did have some exit items and I know most people are familiar with exit items, but they are. They address controlled deficiencies or noncompliance with laws or regulation that have an insignificant or immaterial effect on the entity. So they're not included or referenced in our audit report and they're mostly just housekeeping items between us and the county. And so I will, the only areas that had exit items this year were the accountability audit. So I'm going to go over the accountability audit first and the areas and then the associated exit items with that. And then I will come back and go over the financial statement audit and federal grant compliance audit as well. All right, so on page 13 is where the accountability audit report starts. I have these bookmarked here. So the results in brief for this audit. So this is where we give our opinion. So in those areas selected, the county operations complied in all material respects with applicable state laws, regulations and its own policies and provided adequate controls over the safeguarding of public resources. So if we scroll down here, we have all of the areas that we reviewed during our audit. So I'll go over these really quickly. We reviewed cash receipting for timeliness and completeness of deposits, voids and adjustments at the landfill on the auditor's office. And then accounts payable, we reviewed credit cards and electronic fund transfers. We reviewed the Superior Court for adjustments, collections and cash receipting as well. We reviewed the sheriff's office for citation reconciliations, cash receipting and contract monitoring. We reviewed the Parks and Fair Department for cash receipting, tracking and monitoring of theft sensitive assets. The assessor's office, we reviewed property tax valuations and billings, exemptions and deferrals. And then we also looked at the use of restricted funds for hotel motel taxes, the rural sales and use tax and the auditor's operations and maintenance fund. And then we also looked at equipment rental and replacement. So the establishment of rates, budget compliance and then self insurance for unemployment as well. All right. And then I'm going to go down here to the exit recommendations that we made regarding this area. So only four exit items for the accountability audit. So I'll just briefly go over these and please let me know if there's any questions or any clarifications that anybody needs on any of these items. So there's one item related to the ERNR fund. So the county ERNR department provides maintenance services to outside governments such as fire districts and the Washington State Patrol. When we performed our review, we noted that the county bills direct costs such as supplies and direct labor for these services, but does not include all allocable overhead costs such as indirect administrative labor. Therefore, not all costs associated with these services are recovered. And then we just recommend that the county ensure all costs, direct and indirect, are recovered to ensure that there's not a gift of public funds. So yeah, like I said, the county is definitely recovering all of their direct costs associated with these services and a portion of the indirect costs, but we were noticing that it wasn't, not all of the indirect costs were recovered. And then for the auditor's operation and maintenance fund. So per RCW, the O and M fund is required to be used for, used to fund ongoing preservation of historical documents of all county offices and departments. So we found that the auditor's office was recording 50% of the recording manager's salary to the O and M fund. However, there was not adequate support to demonstrate 50% of the recording manager's time was spent on activities for this specific purpose. So we just recommend that the county ensure all expenses charged to the restricted funds are supported by adequate documentation. And then with the assessor's office, during our review of the assessor's office, we found that the office did not retain detail to support the number of properties inspected or slash revalued, reported to the Department of Revenue to show how they met inspection deadlines. The office was able to run new reports and get within 2% of the figure. So we weren't concerned that the reports were materially inaccurate or anything like that. And then we also worked with the clerk's office. So the clerk's office has established past due collections policies and procedures to ensure past due accounts are sent to collections. However, they have not sent past due accounts to collections since 2017. We continue to recommend the clerk's office send past due accounts to collections in accordance with their established policies and procedures. So yeah, the clerk's office has made, you know, great improvements over the last couple of years. It's just that last piece of actually sending the accounts to collections. And it sounds like the clerk's office is getting there and plans to do that, you know, soon. Perfect. All right. So if there's no questions about any of the items, I will go back to the first page of the exit conference document here. And I'm going to switch gears now to the financial statement and federal grant compliance audit report. So if I scroll down here, there are some communications that are required by audit standards. So in relation to our financial statement audit report, we would like to bring the following to your attention. Uncorrected misstatements in the audited financial statements are summarized on the attached schedule. And we agree with management's representations that these misstatements are immaterial to the fair presentation of the financial statements. And there were no material misstatements in the financial statements corrected by management during the audit. And then there were just two corrected, uncorrected items here. So they just had to do with some coding errors that we found. Nothing significant there. And it's based on conversations with county staff. They are in the process of correcting this for the next, next period. So I will move on to the financial report. So this is the first page that was, it was published on October 12th. And so I'm going to go to the schedule of findings and questions costs, which summarize all or both of our audits here. And so for financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion on the fair presentation of the county's financial statements in accordance with its regulatory basis of accounting. And then separately, we issued an adverse opinion on the fair presentation with regard to GAAP because the financial statements are prepared using a basis of accounting other than GAAP. So that's all normal and expected here. And then we reported no deficiencies related to the financial statements of the county. And then for federal awards, so internal control over major programs. We reported no significant deficiencies, but we did identify a deficiency that we would consider a material weakness related to the federal grant audit. But we did issue an unmodified opinion on the county's compliance with requirements applicable to each of its major programs. And then there is one or two findings. So one over the Belfair and Russell Wood sewer. And then another one over the federal grant compliance audit. So we reviewed four programs this year. So we reviewed the Forest Service Schools and Roads Cluster, which is the program that has the finding with it. The Highway Planning and Construction Cluster, Child Support Enforcement and then the Disaster Grant, Grant as well. And then here, so we have highlighted the financial statement finding, which is the Belfair Sewer in Russell Wood is the first finding and then the federal award finding in question cost is the second finding here. So right here, we can go over this. It's, it is similar to the findings that we've issued in prior audits. So is over Belfair and Russell Wood. This information is pretty similar. The declining financial conditions of the Belfair Sewer Fund and Russell Wood Water and Sewer Funds puts the utilities at risk of not meeting their financial obligations. So this, the background is all the same information except for updated for, you know, 2019 figures. And then if we scroll down here, there is some updated information. So the county is currently in the process of completing a general sewer plan to develop the plan and design for expansion for Belfair. And then down here as well, we reported operating revenues and expenditures for, to create a trend each year to see the net gain or loss. And then the big thing with Russell Wood is that the county does plan to have a usage based system fully implemented in early 2021, which the county believes will help with operation costs and ensuring that revenues are, match the associated expenditures. And the county also has plans to decrease the amount of rate funds used to subsidize the sewer. So that, that's promising as well. And then I'll just get down here to the recommendations because most of this information is the same that it has been in prior years. So we recommend that the Board of County Commissioners continue to update the formal financial plan for Belfair Sewer to reflect actual planned activity and to address how it will improve Belfair Sewer's financial condition and expansion and address Russell Wood Water and Sewers financial condition by implementing a usage based system and revise the plan as needed to ensure that the desired results are achieved. And then working with Public Works in the auditor's office during the audit. This is the county's response. So we are evaluating that information in the development of a financial plan that we expect to finalize during 2020. And then we expect to finalize our financial plan during the development of the county's budget for 2021 for Russell Wood Water and Sewer. So when we come in and audit next year, we'll take a look at the financial plans and evaluate how the county is meeting their goals in future years. So that's how we will look at it in future years is focus on the plan that is developed. And are there any questions about that? I know I kind of went through that pretty quickly only because we've, you know, it's a finding that has been issued in prior, in prior years. And I know that most of the board, you know, everybody's pretty familiar with, with that. All right. So if there's no questions, I'll go on to the single audit finding. So the county did not have adequate internal controls to ensure compliance with federal reporting requirements. So this is related to the schools and roads grants to state. And then I've highlighted a couple important parts here. So the county received 150,000 in federal schools and roads funds during 2019, which includes 23,000 in Title III funds related to this program. And then federal regulations require that the county submit an annual certification of Title III expenditures and unobligated funds financial report to the granting agency certifying that the county spent the funds received for authorized purposes. So this is an annual report that is submitted. And during our audit, we found that the county did not accurately prepare its certification of expenditures and unobligated funds report and did not adequately support amounts reported and did not ensure that the report included all accounts, activity and netted items. So for the cause of condition, we found that the county mistakenly used a general ledger report that did not include all Title III expenditures as the grantor requires when it prepared the certification. So the differences here, you know, the, on the 2019 certification, the county reported funds of 65,000 and amounts expended of 29, but actual amounts were 33,000 and 37,000. And then the county, we did find that the county submitted a corrected annual certification after our audit discovered the errors on the report. And then our recommendation is that the county establish and follow internal controls such as a secondary review to ensure it prepares and submits accurate and complete financial reports to the grantor. And then during our follow up and discussions with management, we found that they are working to implement another staff member reviewing that report before it is submitted to make sure everything is correct. And yeah, the anticipated date to complete the corrective action is effective immediately and ongoing. So yeah. Are there any questions related to that finding? All right. So that, so that schedule here, the schedule of findings summarizes, you know, our financial statement and federal award audit. So the only thing I really wanted to pull out or pull out in the audit report here is the matter of emphasis paragraph on page 44. So as discussed in note eight to the financial statements and described in this, this finding, two of the county's enterprise funds have suffered reoccurring losses from operations and receive subsidies from other funds. So this is, this has been included in our audit report in prior years when we've issued the finding over the sewers. And then also discussed in note eight in February 2020, a state of emergency was declared that could have a negative financial effect on the county. And this is something that we've included in every audit report that we've issued for all of our local governments. So it's not unique to the county, but it is unique to this year's audit report. So I wanted to point that out. And then, so now I will go back up to the exit conference document, the second page here. So finalizing your audit, the report will be issued later this week. And so when the report is issued, the county will receive notification of that. And then the management representation letter. So we received a management representation letter when we issued our financial and federal audit from the county. And then we also received the updated one as well when we issued our, for the accountability audit as well. So this year we received two just because we issued the reports on separate dates. And then audit costs. So we estimated the cost to be 100,000 approximately. And our actual audit costs will approximate that amount. And then the next scheduled audit is to be conducted in July 2021 and will cover the following areas, accountability, financial and federal, just like a typical, typical audit. And then estimated costs are 107,000 as well. And that is based on two audit programs, I believe, for the single audit. So if we have to review more programs. So if we have to review um more programs, then two, uh that cost will uh it will be increased. And then when the accountability audit report is released, uh the county will receive an audit survey from us, so we value your opinions, so um please, yeah, fill out that audit survey and then it can be forwarded to other um management and staff as well. And then there's some resources here for the county to assist them throughout the year, the local government support team and the Center for Government Innovation in our office. And then all of our contact information is available here. Um mine, Cheryl's and Carol's, and then our assistant director and director as well. And then the only items remaining are, so here's the management representation letter that we uh received on October sixth. And then the updated management rep letter. Um I did receive a signed copy of this, I just um didn't have uh, I didn't receive it in time to update it in this document, so um it's received and I have everything that I need from the county. All right, so that is everything from me, if there are no questions, uh comments, concerns, or anything like that.
Chelsea, this is Patty McGuire, I'd just like to say it was an absolute pleasure to work with you this year. Um and um you know, we very much value your input and an outside set of eyes uh looking at our operations, but um you know, you were professional in absolutely every way and and willing to work with us and understand our unique situation here and um but I just wanted to say uh on behalf of the Auditor's Office, thank you very much.
I I agree as well, it's uh it's always great to work with Chelsea and uh the the state auditors, uh it's a it's very good, uh we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hello, this is Victor Redd in in Public Works and um uh thank you for working with us and it was uh great to have dialogue on uh some uh yeah, using the jargon of the profession in in addressing some of the concerns, especially the uh exit conference items. Um I'm uh just looking at the total cost, audit cost, um which uh uh I I have no way of, they they always have been reasonable um uh SAO charges, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for um the State Auditor's Office to make greater use of uh prepared by auditee uh types of uh documents in order to mitigate that cost?
So um I'm try, I I guess I'm trying to understand what the question is, this is Carol. Prepared, I like, you want a list of things that we need or?
I'm wondering that if there's an opportunity uh for you to uh still maintain your independence and for uh documents to uh be prepared and lead sheets to be prepared by uh the county uh that may uh reduce uh the audit costs.
Do you have a specific example?
Uh I'm in Public Works and uh I'm uh no, I don't have a specific example, I'm I'm I really uh wondering if there's an opportunity to collaborate so that we can um uh perhaps your audit would be uh more efficient, not saying that it was, it hasn't been, but that that really uh looking at an opportunity where um that a hundred thousand dollars can be um uh lessened by us here at at the county preparing uh more of the documents that uh that that summarize uh um summarize the work, you're to summarize your audit, make it more efficient to perform your audit procedures.
So I I believe that our, one of the things that we work on is making our audit as efficient as possible. So I'm not, I I'm still kind of a little bit confused about what you're asking, because when we come in and ask you to run, we ask you to run reports for us, and that's part of our process, we don't um we don't run, you know, we don't create reports for you, we ask you to create reports for us to review and to audit. And so I'm struggling a little bit, I it it's sort of an abstract question. I don't know if you have anything to to add to that, Chelsea or or um Cheryl, but I think what we try to do is make it as efficient as possible and and ask you to provide the reports that we need to review. Um I don't know if we're, we try not to ask for duplicate reports. We try to make uh the information as consolidated as possible, um so I don't, Leo, do you have any?
So so over the years, we have, we have improved efficiencies. Uh when I first start, over the last five years, um it's improved drastically. Uh I guess, I it's hard, I don't know what the the proper words are, but uh it was, it was pretty, it was pretty messy when I first started, but uh yeah, it uh I don't, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get it any lower than it is. It was, it was pretty high when I first came and uh we've cut, caught, we've got it down pretty low. It's uh, it's pretty efficient, I don't know how much more efficient we can get it. Um but that's what uh with the doing the internal control studies with our uh external CPA firm and then improving our internal controls and and doing all of that. Just trying to keep the the audit cost down that way, um is probably the best we can do. I don't know, doing the schedules provided by by the client and all that, I don't know if that would be would be, um I don't know if that would improve it or not, probably not. I think what we've been doing over the last five years or so, five or six years is has got, has gotten the cost down as far as we can get it and not to increase the cost, if that makes sense. Yeah, it's uh Mason County is kind of a unique, a unique, unique creature and just our our county environment and um and so forth, kind of rambling.
Well, I would like to say that, you know, back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen compared to now, we um we are charging approximately five to six hundred hours less to complete this audit. So that's a significant change from from, and that has been a, I think, a collaborative effort between this, the State Auditor's Office and the county. So that's a significant um reduction, and that has, you know, ta- everything takes time, but I don't know that we'll ever go much beyond, much below the nine hundred and and change hours that we're doing right now. So all I can say is that over the last five years, we, there's been a significant reduction in the cost to the au- of the audit to the county, so.
Leo and Carol Loretto Swanson here, thank you for the the historical perspective and trends, that's super helpful and appreciated. Um I would like to say, just as a one little teeny example, um I know that on the information that Chelsea requested for various audits, um whenever we suggested a different way of either packaging or providing information, Chelsea was absolutely um open and receptive to things that may provide a more efficient response, but still um the integrity of the response that was required by the auditor, so much appreciated.
Well, and thank you for the feedback, um you know, we, I think that we do, uh we are are aware that um our cost, you know, cost of an audit can be difficult to bear at, you know, during these times right now, and so we're very cognizant of trying to keep things as um efficient as possible. However, at some point, you know, an audit is not it, and
Absolutely.
I think that we, you know, in our, in our collaboration, I have to say that I think we've done a very good job working with with each other to get this process that we do very, is efficient as possible. And I have to also say that I think the county has done a great job over the last five or six years to get things smooth, running more smooth at the county, more efficient at the county, and being able to provide the information we need, plus what the public is required, is requesting in a more effective way as well, so the communication between us has also allowed the county um to have a more open and transparent communicative relationship with the public. So I think we've all done a really good job and we, I anticipate we will continue this collaboration um into the future. So that's, um I guess that's the answer to our our answer and your answer to that question. Did you have anything else?
Um this is Victor again, and uh I don't want to leave uh my comments without saying that it was an absolute pleasure to work with uh uh with your staff, uh my interface was with uh with Chelsea and um you, what, in in regards to audit um audit audit cost, uh I know the uh, well, we are in involved currently in an internal control review, and as we address those uh uh find and address those uh weaknesses, uh perhaps um there would be a um a commensurate uh uh or corresponding look at those internal controls and uh a reduction in in risk in those areas uh possibly uh reflect the resulting in uh uh less testing based upon um less risk in those areas as we address the our uh weaknesses in areas of non-compliance and uh I, you know, I I've been here for for three months now and uh I would be, not that I'm looking for any additional or work to be placed on my plate, but uh I I wanted to address or have this discussion regarding uh any additional reliance that you can uh place on um uh appropriately uh upon the work that we prepare and uh perhaps it would help us to uh reduce our audit audit costs. So uh again, uh thank you for um um your professionalism and uh professional cordiality.
And thank you as well. One thing I do want to talk about is um our office is going to be re- working remotely through uh the end of June. Um and that, and I and I don't know if it will go beyond that, so it's very likely that we will be in the same remote environment for your audit for next year, so I just want to let you know that. Um and I think that we, over the course of the last seven months, our office has really gained some efficiencies in how we do the remote um auditing, I know it's cumbersome in in some ways. Um but that is the future for our office going forward, so I just wanted to let you know that. Any other questions?
Just a real quick comment, um wanted to thank you and Carol, I just saw you at the the MTA audit as well, and appreciate your 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 expertise, your professionalism, and um look forward to working with you guys more in the future.
Well, thank you, appreciate the same from you. Well, I think that's all we have, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
You.
Um welcome to our twenty one budget workshop, is everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay, we have in the room Randy Netherlin, Kevin Shutey, Don Twitty, Diedrick Allen, Diane Zorn, Frank Pinter, Leo Kim, Patsy Robinson, Sharon Trask, Vicky King, and myself, Jennifer Byerly. So um this is a continuation from from last week's uh twenty twenty one budget workshop. And I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. So this is the um the summary of the general fund revenues, right now we are at, can everybody see that?
I don't see anything.
Oh, sorry. Can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay, so right now we are at uh fifty-three million four hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars in the general fund revenue, that includes the beginning fund balance of fourteen million uh estimate, and if we take that out, we are at thirty-nine million four hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. And looking on the expenditure sheet now, we have um on, oh, I have my my scribbles on there. So we are at uh fifty-three million four hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four thou- thousand, and that includes ending fund balance of twelve million eight hundred and one and eight hundred and one thousand six hundred and eleven dollars, and um total expenditures excluding ending fund balance total expenditures excluding ending fund balance, forty million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. We started out last week, we were at a difference between inter-period revenue and expenditures of one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-four thousand. And now after last week's changes, we are at one million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. And those changes are listed on, on this sheet here. We have the assessor's office. Re, I, I'm calling it a reclass on here, but I think it's actually a promotion is what was decided of three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. We have an emergency management adding the one FTE that's eighty-four percent funded by FEMA and ESPG grants. We have the reduction that we made from District Court's PLRs of thirty-six thousand, which I forgot to add in the explanation on there, but it's taking out the, the judge pro temp of twenty-five thousand, the interpreter of fifty-five hundred, postage of thirty-three hundred, travel of five hundred, juror and witness services of seventeen hundred, which totals thirty-six thousand. Office of Public Defense, we added thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and five dollars for their one FTE, Public Defender, and then offsetting revenue of thirty-six thousand, which is a difference of thirty-two oh five. We already had seventy-two thousand in, in the budget for contracts and so anyway, the difference is the, the difference is the adding the one FTE, the thirty-nine two oh five. In the office, we removed one of the FTEs that were previously added during the budget process. That was the FTE for the opening of, of Building Ten. And then in non-departmental, we added three hundred thousand in Seattle Shellfish revenue. In facilities, DCD parks, and I forgot to list motor pool on there as well. We have the general services Teamsters contract settlement of a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred total. And so the total impact to ending fund balance from last week is a difference of an increase of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is the difference between last week's one point four eight two million and this week's one point one nine eight million. So the only other changes that I have on my list to make are the the updating of the property tax, which I'm not quite prepared to do. I have the resolutions sent to the assessor's office for, for review. But I believe the change is going to be this twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars reduction in, in property tax revenue for the general fund in, in the treasurer's office revenue. And then I did have two other questions open that we haven't addressed previously, or we need to address again. In the auditor's O and M fund, we did move that, that position up into fully funded out of current expense, which was, you know, the auditor's recommendation, which is great. But I left in the auditor's O and M fund, one oh four, salaries and benefits. And I talked to Patty McGuire about it and he thought that was a good idea in case there was any work that was done in that fund. So I wanted to ask the commission before I leave salaries and benefits in that fund, if that's something that you would like to see available for use in case any work is done in that fund. Does that make sense? Should I expand or reword?
Can you explain that to me one more time?
Yeah, so, so the auditor's O and M is that position that was funded halfway out of that fund. It, it's now showing up in the auditor's office in, in current expense out of the auditor's office, the oh oh one, oh three oh fund. But the salaries and benefits that were in the auditor's O and M fund for that half are still sitting in there in that fund. And I can move that amount to ending fund balance and have nothing available or have it partially available for use in case anything, any work is done.
Absence of a presentation or request, I think it's more appropriate for just to go back to the ending fund balance if the commission with a request that, you know, he has a position available or money available for part-time or some other, that'd be different. But absent of that, I don't think it'd be appropriate.
Okay, then I will move that in to, to salary, I mean, I'm sorry, to ending fund balance. And it doesn't change the, the amount that's budgeted in that fund. Like, I'll give you an example, so you can see. So on this sheet that was emailed to you today, and I'll put it online so that everybody has access to it as well. This shows the salaries and benefits and operating and the revenues for each, each fund compared to 2020. So so there's 2020 adopted budget, 2021 proposed budget, and then auditor's O and M fund one oh four. We have that fifty thousand, nine seventy-four for salaries and benefits sitting there. I'll just move that over into.
The funds will still be there if he needs them. We can, you know, we can sit and talk as a commission about how that would be done in the next year, but.
Yeah, if they, if they need it, they can apply for a budget amendment and do it that way. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Jen, I have a, I have an issue I need to go back on before we go too much further. I need to clarify something. We, if the commission does agree, they are not creating a line to promote somebody in the assessor's office. That, that's not what we do at this level. What we may do is allow for the budget to show a reorg or a position correction. And that's what we're looking at here. We don't hire the person, we don't select the person to move up or to be promoted. That's not what we're doing. We're just, if we decide we're allowing for them to have that new position with the doing away with that other position in their office and the rest, it has to go off for bid and stuff. It's all up to them at that point, not us.
I would, I would concur with that.
Okay, so are we then removing that thirty-seven sixty out of the budget then for twenty?
I wasn't saying that. I was just saying it's not a promotion. It's not a, it, I'll leave it to the other commissioners, whether it stays there. I just, it's just not a promotion.
It's, it's two different conversations. One is, one is essentially creating another position line item. And the other is insinuating in some way that we're promoting somebody by agreeing with them.
Yes.
We don't, we don't deal on that level of operations.
Okay, sorry for the miss.
I don't think we, anything in our, in our policy for promotions.
We do not. This would not be the place to do it. I want one, but this isn't it.
Completely separate conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, so how, how would you like to handle that then in the budget?
Just part of, is considered as, you know, internally for us, as a type of reorg. You're removing the one position and creating the, the second position. Or creating the analyst position, removing the the appraiser position.
So add another line in their budget and then fund that new line and then not fund the, the existing line?
If that's what the commission is agreeing to do, is the commission agreeing to move forward on that, on that, on that proposition of creating the analyst versus and removing the, the assessor or the?
Appraiser.
Appraiser.
In my mind, excuse me, in my mind, that would be the only, the only way I would be supportive if it was, you know, so the way it's been kind of explained, and I've seen the email change, is you have six people in those positioning. Four field appraisers and two appraiser analysts. And so as long as we're keeping it six and, you know, expanding or creating a new position on the appraiser analyst and doing the reduction on the other side, then I, I'm supportive.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. Keeping the FTE count the same. But just creating, I guess, the, the new position, which would have to go, I believe, through HR and then have to be advertised.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if then maybe we should keep it out of the budget at this time since it hasn't went through.
And Jennifer, if I may interject, I, I think what the board is saying is, is that it's a we're adding, we're changing one position from analyst to, I'm sorry, from an appraiser to an analyst. So all we're doing is substituting one position for another. No change in FTEs. The other position is slightly higher in pay. That's the three thousand, seven hundred dollars. So that's the budgetary authority that the appraiser is looking for, is to increase their salaries and benefits by that three thousand, seven hundred dollars. The process would be something that HR goes through and the appraiser in order to get that position moved.
But in the future, we either agree or disagree on this at a different time. It gets added into the budget during budget time, of course, but this decision should not be being made now. But we've, we're in that position to do it. So we're making the decision now, but in the future, I hope this is something that we deal with differently. We've never done it this way. It's not an appropriate way, I don't believe, to handle it, but we're going to handle it and take care of it this time to get it finished.
Okay, so I will go ahead and get the new line and not fund the existing line. Keep that thirty-seven sixty total on, along with whatever the existing line has on it and keep it in.
Frank, is she going to have a problem advertising and getting that position filled before the new year?
I don't think so.
So why don't we just remove that other line then? If it's not going to be needed in there for the next year, remove that position line.
Yep, we can do that.
I think that's the, I think that's the most appropriate way to deal with it.
Yep.
I agree.
This, this has everything to do with position control and the county is moving towards that.
Yes.
Say that within each department, there is a mechanism to account for FTEs one year to the next, as well as salaries and benefits dollars. So we will improve on the mechanism going forward so that it doesn't come into the budgetary conversation.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Frank. The last thing that I wanted to address was Rhodes, new road projects. Their ending, beginning and ending fund balance line, we have four million dollars in that line currently. And I know that the commissioners, you had talked about adding dollars into that line. Is that something that we want to do now?
I, well, I need, for me to be supportive, I want to, but to be supportive of it, I need Loretta to decide the amount and where it was going to come from and.
Loretta and I talked about it this morning and she was comfortable with five hundred thousand and I was thinking the same, just.
That I'm comfortable with five hundred thousand.
And you are too.
Yes.
Yeah, Trask and Shutey.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I will move that then. Is there anything else that we want to talk about?
Budget-wise or just in general?
Yeah. Oh, I guess I should tell you that the changes to the special funds on the the general services Teamsters. So in community services health, we have thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and five dollars for their change. In the landfill, we have twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and one dollars in North Bay Sewer, forty-one thousand, four hundred and four dollars. Russell Wood Sewer and Water, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars in Beards Cove Water, five thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and Belfour Sewer, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars for a total of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eight dollars change to the salaries and benefits due to the general services Teamsters contract settlement. And all of that came out of ending fund balance. With community services health, I added it into beginning fund balance as well and their ending fun, fund balances zero for budget purposes, but we all know that it's going to be much higher than that in reality. So any questions or, or comments on that?
Nope, not for me.
Okay. Then I, I think we're ready to put out a final, so I will put the, the total budget, it'll be on the website by Monday, hopefully before then, at the end of this week. And it has to be out by law on Monday for adoption on December seventh.
Great. Way near the end.
Yeah.
Jennifer, just as, as you kind of, you know, crystal ball things as much as you can, are you anticipating any? Are you confident still, given the, the latest round of restrictions in our sales tax projections? Is there anything that gives you pause there?
No, not at all in the sales tax department. I mean, we're on track this year to receive six point six million at least. It, as long as we if we receive exactly what we had received last year in November and December, we will be at six point six million. And we've surpassed what we have received over last year and the last, I mean, every single month this year, I believe.
No, I've given this great thought and I, I have a feeling that this COVID thing has actually been extremely beneficial to our sales tax because normally where you would have a whole region of North Mason and South Mason that would go to Olympia, North Mason, go into Kitsap, they're not doing it and they were literally buying online and we were receiving that, that benefit of that.
Right.
And I think that's going to happen here on Christmas, too, which interesting for us, bad for them, good for us.
Right, I, I agree. I, I think that with, with the, the sales tax and I know I'm contributing to that as well. But I think also people will probably shop more local during this season because we are restricted. And so I, I do see, I think out of all of this, I think that that's the, the best silver lining that we could find or have.
You know, the Kitsap mall is a ghost town in comparison to any other year.
Oh, I bet. Well, I appreciate that, just, just asking.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments before we wrap up?
Thank you for all your hard work, Jennifer. You are highly appreciated by all of us here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're in the home stretch.
Yes, we're almost done. Okay, thank you very much. It's been great working with all of you. Over this, I'm not quitting.
I was going to say, wait a minute.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Bye.